Looking for a place to shine? Are you ready? Want Georgian's eyes on you, so let's go. Good Morning Georgia is here, start your day the Georgia way. Want attention for your brand broadcast today only on Good Morning Georgia. Contact us today, email on info at communications at the dot com or call seven seven oh four two one five five nine eight.
Tune in to Good Morning Georgia. Join hosts Audrey Bell Kearney and Derek J Wilson every weekday at nine AM for your daily dose of news, politics, business, and entertainment. From local updates to insights from affiliate partners across and beyond Georgia, we've got your mornings covered. Tune in to stay informed and entertained with Good Morning Georgia.
Good morning, Georgia.
It's like some dogs.
Now this dog, they having a fight.
Good morning, Georgia. How y'all doing?
Good morning, Georgia. Good morning, good morning, good morning.
It's a brand new day.
It's so funny. Every time we come on, we be in the middle of doing something that should have been done. That should have been done before we even went live. Hope you guys are having a wonderful day today. It's Wednesday. It's hump day, baby. You have made it to the middle. You are to the M I D D L E. You're just two days away from, from the weekend.
I know you had to be a certain age to remember that commercial.
I, I remember that. So I have no idea what they're.
Saying you had to be at least, I want to say what twenty-five maybe?
I don't remember that Derek.
You remember the hump, that, that, the camel walking through the office, talking about, you know what day it is? You know what day it is? And guy was like, okay, what day is?
Don't remember that.
Okay.
It must have been Texas. I don't remember no junk like.
That was a, I want to say like an ESPN, anyway.
Okay, so I never watched ESPN back then. I'm watching now though.
There's a commercial where, where, you know, people would get up, anyway, it was a camel. And you know, camel has a hump. So obviously he loves hump day. And so imagine that coworker that's always, you know, annoying. And so he comes up to the cubicle and he's like, hey Steve, guess what day it is? He was like, ah, yeah, guess what day it is? He's like, what day is it? Hump day, huh? And you know, then you see a hump, but anyway.
It's hump day. Just in case you haven't figured it out yet, it is day and it's almost the weekend, but it's a beautiful day here in Winnet County.
It is. It is. It looks cloudy earlier.
It was. Not, not a sunny, well, I think it is gonna rain. I hope it don't rain Friday night, but I am gonna go out and get me a raincoat because I don't want to get wet at the game Friday.
Hey, 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 you a fan. So I thought, you know, fans.
I don't like being wet though. You know what's crazy? My brother and I, my brother and I like night and day, but he's like one of my best friends. Um, whenever it would rain, he would go out shopping. Me, if, if they say rain in the forecast, everybody who knows me knows it's a no for me. I ain't, I'm not coming out the house. Him, he goes shopping.
Yeah, I know.
So then why do you, he and his wife, why do you guys like to go shopping in the rain? They love to shop in the rain. And the minute they say rain in the forecast, my friend knows she not going.
Yeah, nah, we don't do, uh, I try to stay, I, I don't like being on the road when it's raining.
That's not down in Georgia.
Because people can't drive. I mean, that's anywhere. People can't drive.
I don't know about anywhere, but definitely down here. Cause I haven't seen people drive so crazy in the rain until I got down here. Like, like seriously, it's raining. Why you going so fast?
New York, y'all don't even drive. Y'all ride subway and bikes.
Not in Jersey. Not, not in Jersey.
No, okay.
No, that's New York. Jersey, we drive cars.
Y'all driving Jersey?
We do.
Well, look, let's jump into this weather. Uh, so I'll, uh, I saw on the, uh, the mayor of Savannah's website, uh, Facebook page that there have been a heat wave. Um, the heat index. So I'm calling out what it's, what it is. Uh, the heat index is what it feels like. Uh, and so today's high is, is actually a little warmer today. You know, ninety in Atlanta. Make sure that's right. Ninety in Atlanta, uh, eighty-eight in Athens, ninety in Roswell, eighty-nine in, uh, Cameron, uh, ninety-two in Rome, ninety-one in La Grange. It's still hotter in Columbus, ninety-five in Columbus, uh, ninety-five in Albany, ninety-six in Valdosta. Uh, but it's, 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 the temperature is cooler down there by the water, eighty-eight, ninety in Brunswick. And Savannah has a high ninety, but that's the temperatures. What it feels like is the heat index. And, um, over the last couple of days down south, in, in addition to dealing with the flooding, the heat index went up to a hundred and twelve.
Listen, I got in my car on Saturday, it said one oh three, and then I went somewhere going towards eighty-five. I think I was on Pleasant Hills about, about to get on eighty-five. It went up to a hundred and seven. I thought something was wrong with the car. I'm like, it can't be that hot. It can't be that hot.
I think our cars.
But I had been driving for a while. It's not like I had just started.
I think our cars feel the index. Like, I think our car, our car temperatures is what it feels like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A hundred and, like, I said to my granddaughter, it's a hundred and seven degrees?
She was like, oh no.
She was like, gee, you keep saying that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what's so hot.
That's hot.
She calls me gee, gee, you keep saying that. That's cause it's hot.
That's in Arizona and California. And so I try to be mindful when I, when I talk to them to not complain about the heat. Because, you know, they, they are in the triple digits on a regular basis.
I went to Arizona for my birthday in twenty-one.
But see, your birthday is in the wintertime.
It was beautiful.
Yeah, I bet you wouldn't go.
No, 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 no.
My sister.
I'm allergic to the heat.
Shout out to my sister Jacqueline. She lives in, uh, Arizona. And, uh, she was like, yeah, y'all come out here. Uh, don't come during the summertime.
You gotta tell me twice.
Oh, yeah, I'll, yeah.
I remember one of my good friends went to Vegas. It was hilarious. So she's from Jersey, one of my best friends. She went to Vegas and she said, she called a taxi or Uber or something. And they said, so when they got to her, they said, ma'am, it's across the street. She's like, I'm not walking. She said, that's how hot it was. So the taxi took her from one casino across the street. It was hilarious. She's like, I'm not, and she said some choice words that I can't say, but it was hilarious.
It was that hot.
She said it was that hot.
You know, going to different climates. I was in, uh, Indiana during the wintertime. I don't know, making money. And, um, I get it. So to me, it's cold. I mean, it was about, it was below freezing. It was definitely thirty, thirty-one, thirty.
That's cold.
Um, but you know, people out there jogging, they, you know, they just shovel the snow. And so I get in the car. The guy has the ACL. And he sitting there with a T-shirt. And I'm like, hey man, um, I say, can you turn this, I'm all, can you turn this AC down? It's a little cold. I'm like, ah, man, this is sweater weather for us. Wow, okay. Now, one thing I can say, it wasn't windy. So it didn't feel, it, it didn't feel like it was as cold as it was. Like, cause it got down to negative eighteen, but everything was still, it wasn't windy. It wasn't anything. I think the wind.
Still a negative eighteen, shush.
Well, only way you'll feel it is if you're standing out there.
Yeah, I wouldn't be standing out there.
But if you're going like from your house to your car, from your car to your office, you really won't feel it because, you know, it's, I mean, it cold is cold unless you standing out there. And then that wind makes a difference too. Because, you know, I've been in Houston and, and they say it's sixty degrees, but the wind chill. We up there, we even pulled out the fur and the boot and the leather at sixty.
I just had a, I just had a memory when I was going to school. So imagine, imagine it being thirty-one degrees and you have to walk to school because that's what we did. Like, we, we didn't, there were no buses. There was a city bus. And by the time it got to my house, it was packed. Couldn't even get on. So it just kept, it just passed right by you. So one year it was cold and it had snowed and it was ice on the ground. So my cousin, so the way we lived, we lived side by side. So it was my brother, my, well, not my brother. We went to a different high school. But my three cousins are girls. They, they live right next door and everybody on the block. So we all walked to school together. We all went to high school together. And it's one particular morning, we were walking and had iced up. And we got to this driveway that had a slope, right? And I don't know what made her decide to walk on top of the slope. And she just hit, bam, bam, and just flipped it. Everybody just rolled. She probably was mad at me for, for life after that. Cause it was, it was, so she did, she flipped over. She turned like a couple times and she slid down. And it's a, it's a bunch of us because we all going to school. That was hilarious. So I'm probably paying for that. It happened to me too, but I wasn't on ice. I was at somebody's house and I thought the guy was a little heated. Like I knew him. And my husband and I had seen him walking down the street in Jersey. And we were walking down, he was walking down the street like, hey. And he saw us and he's like, hey, I've been looking for you. But we had moved. And so he invited us to come into his apartment and we knew the building because one of my friends used to live in the building and go in the building. But he was acting a little strange. He locked the door with all the bolts on the door. My husband and I looking at each other like, what is happening right now? What is going on? So he started talking, talking real nutty. And so we was like, okay, well, we gotta go. He's like, okay. So we get on the elevator to go down, go downstairs right there. We get downstairs on the, on the first floor in the elevator. He done like, it's, and scared me right. Down to the elevator. He shook me so much. So I walked out the door and fell and rolled down the stairs. My husband was like, hey, he reaching out one hand. On the road to the bottom of the steps, land on the sidewalk. So that was my payback for laughing at my cousin.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah, that was hilarious. Okay, let's go.
So, uh, well, we're gonna go into, uh, I guess headline news, uh, you know, first we're gonna talk national, see what's going on, on the national scene. Before we, what you got on your?
I ain't got no national money and I got.
You got some local?
Yeah.
Well, we can, we got, we can always talk national. Uh, you know, Trump sued, uh, the, I want to say the Department of Justice yesterday because, uh, he said his, his, the raid of his home, uh, Mar- Mar-a-Lago was, uh, unconstitutional, whatever it was. So he sued up a hundred million dollars.
You need that money for that campaign?
A hundred million dollars.
He need the money for the campaign.
So I thought that was.
So he, no campaign money is flowing his way right now. And, and so everybody talked about how he flubbed the, the, the interview with Elon. So.
I didn't see that. He had interviewed her?
Yeah, he did. They did it on Twitter, but it took them, like, something was wrong with Twitter. It took like forty-five minutes for them to actually get going. And I wondered if he talked to them like he talked to the young lady over at the Black, uh, journalist event where he said how long it took them to get going. You were thirty minutes late, well, they were forty minutes late for Elon.
Well, you know, he didn't, you know, he didn't do that.
I know. I just, I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Uh, Ernesto is, is, has stricken into a hurricane, uh, still not, it, well, so it hit Puerto Rico, uh, but it hasn't, they, you know, still too far out to determine whether or not it's, uh, coming. But they said, it looked like it's taking the same path of Maria. If anybody remember Maria in two thousand seventeen.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, nah, I wouldn't know anything about Jersey.
Good morning, Janine Biggins.
I heard.
She was my first mentor.
Oh, okay. Hey.
Way back when, an astute businesswoman. Thank you so much for joining us this morning. Back in the day. Yes.
And so, uh, you know, so let's keep out for our national because it could make its way this way. Uh, you know, prayers for the ones that's already been affected and, uh, move on from that. Uh, this week, uh, Harris and Trump both will be talking, uh, about their economic plans, the economy. So, uh, be mindful of that. No, listen, again, I heard it on the radio this morning, heard on the radio yesterday. I've said it, you know, learn what's going on, vote your interest.
Let me just say this. You gotta go back and look at just some of the clips of the, I, I don't think it was, I don't think it was video. I think it was all audio. Cause I think, I think they did it in an audio room. But it was one thing in the audio room when, when Trump was telling the story how he told Putin not to do something. And he said, um, he told Putin, don't do it, don't do it, Putin, don't do it. And he said, um, say something about, no way. He said, yes way.
Putin said, yes way?
Trump said it. It was hilarious. And I was like, I'm like, really? You had to listen to it. It's like, they gotta know, they gotta know, um, they're supposed to be in Maryland too. They gotta, you gotta listen to that and know that something is definitely off. But that, it's always been off. So.
Well, you know, it is, well, so, uh, uh, so this week is week one of, as, as Audrey has been saying since Monday, week one of high school football.
Yeah.
And so, uh, that's about to be, be, be on everybody's mind. So the five, according to the AJC, the five best Georgia high school football storylines entering week one, uh, can't go past that. So, AJC, man, they got a block on it. But, uh, so, oh, here you go. So when you got Douglas versus La Grange, Kell versus North Atlanta.
That's a Koki Kell classic.
Oh, okay.
That's gonna be Mercedes Benz probably.
Oh, that's a big one. I, okay. Well, that's a big one. If you in the metro, uh, check that out. Uh, preseason football. Man, football was big. I thought football was big in Texas, but football is big out here.
Yeah, football is big. And I think the reason it's so big is because they have really big aspiration. You know, when I look at the crowds, uh, for football here, when I first moved here, we went to an Archie game over in Lawrenceville. And my husband and I were driving to the game. We were like, this can't be people at the game. Like they were parked on the side of the road, like a half a mile down. It was like, this can't be the football. That was our first game. It's gonna be a high school football. It was crazy. And I kind of cheated a little bit because I had my mother's handicap sticker and forgive me y'all. I had my mother's handicap sticker and I was like, I was like, and he's like, come on in and put me right at the gate. But football is serious business for a lot of kids. And I think for down here, they just see the opportunity. And then the SEC is like, where you want to be?
Yeah, yeah.
They want to be in the SEC.
I remember, you know, kind of similar story when I first, uh, moved to Abilene, Texas. You know, that's a, that's a small town. They got two high schools. And everybody was like, in my freshman year in college, they was like, man, you going to the, uh, going to the Abilene, Abilene Cooper game? I'm like, what's, what's that? That's the, that's the Abilene High School and the Cooper. I said, so we're going to a high school game. Yeah, you know, I'm thinking like, why are we college folks going to high school? Well, I end up going to that first game. When I tell you everybody from the university was there.
Yeah.
And when I say that game, I think everybody in the whole city was there rooting for you. Abilene High, Cooper. That was probably the largest non-professional football game that I've ever been to. And they, they are serious about they, they, they football. And I say they as in community, you know, these, so, um, we want to do some high school shout outs. So if, if, if you in a community where your football team is kicking butt, uh, and you want to give them a shout out, come out here and give them a shout out. We would love to hear about what's going on in your neck of the woods with your high school football.
I got a football story. I would listen.
You got a lot of.
I'm a stor-, I'm a storyteller. It's what I do every day. That's why you hear me all the time and you read all the stuff. So last year, Grayson High School, um, played, I think it was Valdosta, it was school in Valdosta. But anyway, the coach down there was originally their coach. And he got mad and left and went down there. And they had to take that long ride up here to play Grayson. So, um, when they got up here, Grayson has like a DJ at the school. So the music is like blaring. Like, yeah, when they're not calling the games and plays and stuff, the music is loud. So they got a DJ. And, um, they played Welcome Back Carter. His name was Coach Carter. They played Welcome Back Carter while they was beating the snot out of him. And I was like, boy, I know that's a long three and a half hour drive back because they got beat down. You know, he, and I think he felt like he wanted to leave because, you know, the kids weren't whatever. But anyway, the new coaching staff came in and they beat him down. And they, they poked him all night. It was so, that was such a fun game because they poked him. Every kind of Carter song, every kind of winning loser song, All I Do Is Win. Every kind of song they could find, they played it. And I said, boy, I know that was a long ride back down South Georgia for that one. Anyway.
Yeah, that, you know, I didn't get into football really. Like I said, I went to that game in, uh, my freshman year in high school, I mean, college. But then, um, I didn't really, you know, stay into football. I really cared about football. But I went to school with Danielle Manning. He was drafted by the Chicago Bears, uh, in two thousand three, I believe. Uh, he went to the Super Bowl with them the next season as a rookie. Uh, he played for the Houston Texans. So I was, that's when I started. And then as my son got older, uh, you know, he's into that sports and whatnot. So it made me get back into sports. But yeah, I loved it and it was great. Uh, but anyway, let's, let's keep on with the news because our guest is coming up soon.
But I gotta tell you this, I'm about to get into fantasy football. So last night on my way from dinner, I was trying to come up with the name of my team. So my husband's team is the, the Georgia Killer Bees, the AI Assassins in the Brick, Brick City Somebody. So I was like, what about, what about a name on the Georgia Tasmanian Devils? He's like, that's too long.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a little long.
Too long. So I, I gotta come up with my name for my fantasy team before it's fantasy season kickoff. Hey, want to give a shout out to, uh, congratulations to Mahalia, uh, Sabra, who was selected for NASA internship. Yeah, she goes to the Gwinnett School of Mathematics and Science and Technology. That's so pretty. That's so cool. We need more females out there in the world doing great work. So she's going to be doing an internship at NASA. She's a junior this year. And, um, she's over the Gwinnett School of Mathematics. I just want to give her some love because, you know, um, she's gonna, she's going into a field that I'm pretty sure is predominantly male oriented. And she's a, she's a young female of color. So I'm expecting her to do great things and make great shots. I just wanted to shout out to Mahalia. What is it? Sabra, Sabra.
Okay.
Congratulations for that darling. Congratulations.
Congrats, congrats. Keep doing a good work.
Congrats, congrats. The city of Norcross, the city of Norcross, um, is, uh, let you know that if you are gonna be anywhere around, um, uh, Peachtree to Thrasher, the road is gonna be closed this Friday. Yep, six thirty to ten thirty. I had to tell you that because I was stuck on eighty-five Saturday with the indexman, a hundred and three to a hundred and seven. It was hot. So find a new way to get somewhere between Sat- Friday and Saturday, the road is gonna be closed. I just wanted to let y'all know that. Cause I don't want you to be blindsided and then you stuck in traffic like I was and just hot. And my baby said, you just said that. I'm like, because it's still hot darling. Is it still very, still very hot out here? So make sure to check that out. You got more news? Cause I got more news to go.
Well, these, these, yeah, no, not, not right now. I'm just anxious to talk to our guy.
I, I guess it's coming up shortly. We gotta give news. Okay. So down, down in La Grange, Georgia, um, that's my event. Well, this is an event, but this is an announcement, public service announcement. Um, Georgia State Patrol Officer Blake Schaber, who recently, he recently had a heart transplant. They're doing a fundraiser for him. He is forty-nine years old. He's a Navy veteran and a father of two. And has been out of work since early July. He has a, he had heart surgery. They're asking you to support them. They're having a, um, brown bag barbecue. And they want you to support him. So for more information, you can reach out to Susan Whitley. That's interesting. Susan Whitley. Um, and her number is seven oh six eight eight three two six one zero, seven oh six eight eight three two six one zero, seven oh six eight eight three two six one zero.
That's actually Whitley. No, that's, that's Whitley. Here, he Whitley.
Whitley, Whitley. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Reach out to Susan Whitley, um, if you want to support, um, Officer Schiber, uh, who had heart transplant surgery. That's, that's serious. He needs your help. So I want to tell you. All right. So the, uh, the city of Augusta, the city of Augusta offers a convenient ten month payment plan for the FY twenty-five tax year known as Tax Club Program. You can enroll or renew your membership, but you gotta do it before August the thirty-first. You can enroll or renew your membership, but you have to do it before August thirty-first. So go to the city's website for more information. Participant will receive a sheet of tax coupon and accompanied by a FAQ sheet. You can mail the coupons in. It's a program. I guess you could pay monthly or whatever, play some kind of plan, but you can do that. So, but you got it. Listen, if you got questions about this, the deadline is August the thirty-first. If you have questions, reach out to them at two oh seven six two six two three one zero. Again, that number is two oh seven six two six two three one zero, two oh seven six two six three two three one zero. All right, all right, cool.
Well, well, now we're getting back in school. Uh, one of the headlines that I, I, I found in, out of making at, on the Telegraph, it was asking, uh, can a teacher or a daycare worker legally spank your child?
Hmm.
You know, um, I grew up in an area where I received pops before, uh, you know, believe it or not, you know, this, this good kid over here has received a pop or two in his life, but.
So you were good though. That's you saying that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was an excellent child.
Oh.
But, uh, anyway. So what do you think? Do you think, uh, you know, be- before we quote Georgia law, do you think, uh, a teacher or daycare worker is able to spank your child legally?
Well, legally, I got, I got plenty of beatings when I was in Georgia. When I got to Jersey, it was against the law. And then when I, I remember, I remember my last beating I got, I was in sixth grade. Mr. Manny beat me because I went into the boys bathroom playing around. Um, yeah, I was a little bit rough. Um.
Talking about me, you have no room for judgment, man.
I'm not judging.
I've never, I've never been in the girls' bathroom.
No, well, whatever. Um, I got a beating for that. But when I got to Jersey, it was against the law. And I remember my first year, I was in seventh grade and the student threw the garbage can at the teacher and nothing happened. And I went home and I told my mom and I was like, nothing happened because I was so shocked because I had got, I had been getting beaten since like third, third grade. So, um, that to me, that was normal. So I'm, you know, for me, I guess it's, it's a matter of, um, the teacher and how they do it. Like, we didn't get beaten, beaten. I miss him. Mr. Manny beat me with a paddle. Like I had to put my hands against the wall and get a paddle. He, he hit me like three times. And then I got the hot seat a couple of times. I was sitting in the chair and I got hit on the thigh with a ruler for like five times. That was a beating. That's what they, so I don't know what that looks like today. And I don't know if I would trust people to do it today because there's a lot of pent up stressing folks. And that's the opportunity for them to take it out legally on your child. So I'm not sure I really, um, agree with that.
Well, currently there are nineteen US states that allow school personnel to use corporal punishment, uh, to discipline children. From the time they start preschool all the way till they graduate high school. And yes, one of them are, is Georgia, the state of Georgia. It is legal. It is legal for, uh, it, it has to be, obviously it has to be part of the school's policy. You know, a teacher can't take it upon themselves to beat your job without your permission. Uh, well, without it being part of the school policy. Uh, two, uh, it can't be the first, you know, instance, like the child can't get in trouble and the first time they get in trouble, they get spanked. It has to be done by an approved personnel as in a principal, assistant principal, or whoever else the school, the district dean person, uh, approved. And lastly, uh, a ridding, a written explanation, explanation of what took place and why has to be provided to the parent the day of the, the punishment was issued.
I don't, I don't remember my mother getting all of that. I just remember getting a beat.
Yeah, I don't remember all of it. I just, you know, and, and for me, my, you know, I used to coerce my grandmother to say, no, like, no, you don't want no beating your, your grandbaby. No, you don't want that. And the teacher didn't care. They beat my butt.
Yeah.
You know, it was normally a coach. Go, go see Coach such and such. He like, I don't want to see Coach man. Coach will put that paddle. And, you know, and so I never pledged, but, uh, that probably would deter me from pledging because I, I had enough paddling. That by the time I got, I got older, I'm like, yeah, I wish you would. So, but, uh.
And you get that paddle, boy, you get that wood.
Yeah, no, uh, yeah, I, and, and no, but actually the paddle hurt, but I think the worst one was my fifth grade teacher, Mr. Walker. He'd have been your handbag like, like this, and he'd hit that ruler. And man, you know, you trying to be, and I was in fifth grade. That was the last time I got paddled. Uh, and he was tanning my hair. I'm trying to keep your face, you know?
That's what it is.
Trying not to cry in front of people. Man, it was horrible. It was horrible. But yeah, so we're gonna go to commercial. We'll be back with our special guest, uh, Commissioner Aaron Whitley, uh, Chatham County Commissioner Aaron White. We'll be back soon.
Did your business accept Visa or MasterCard anytime between January first, two thousand four and January twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen? If so, then you may qualify to share in one of the largest class action settlement payouts in history, a staggering six point one billion dollars. Visa Inc. and MasterCard Inc. Agreed to settle this case and were ordered to repay merchant processing interchange fees overpaid by their customers. To be included, you must opt into the list of participating merchants by August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. You will not be included unless you officially opt in. No personal documents or statements are required. To apply, we need your business name and basic contact information. For more information and how to get your share of this six point one billion dollars, text NOISE to two six seven eight six. Again, text NOISE to two six seven eight six. That's NOISE to two six seven eight six. Remember the deadline is August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
It's another, the dad is over.
All right.
Welcome back, welcome back. We're gonna bring our guest to the stage. Derek over here trying to do what I do, like messing up the whole program.
Man, like, hey.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning, good morning. How you doing, Audrey and Derek? How y'all doing? Good morning, y'all.
We're good, Commissioner. How are you?
I'm blessed. I'm on this side of the dirt, so I might as well make it work, you know?
They, there it is. I like them. Have to bite that.
I heard someone say, uh, I'm glad that I'm, I'm seen and not viewed or something like that.
Oh, yeah, I like that one too.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate y'all having me on this morning.
Oh, yeah.
We're glad you, glad you're here. Um, a lot going on in, in your neck of the woods. So we just want you to jump on and tell us what's happening down there. We, we hope that this is a regular segment. Because we are, you know, we want to cover all of Georgia and we want our, our local officials and local community to come on and share what's happening. Cause we can't be everywhere. It's, how many counties in Georgia?
One thirty-nine.
Hundred thirty-nine counties. We can't be everywhere, but we can invite.
Hundred fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, yeah, fifty-nine. Yeah, yeah.
Hundred and fifty-nine.
Thank you, thank you. Well, you know, jump. Thank you, thank you. Well, you know, ju- you know, just to jump in, how is everything? I know you guys had record flooding over the past couple of days. Uh, you know, aftermath of Debbie. So just how is everything and what's going on as far as the recovery?
Yeah, so um, we are just seeing water levels, uh, water levels move away from our roads. Um, in my district, my district was probably hit the worst with the flooding. The county as a whole definitely felt all of the effects of the storm itself. I mean, basically, two to three days of rain straight. Um, and um, and it, because it just sat for so long, it took so long for the storm to move. Um, and then the challenging aspect of that was that once it was here, it moved to the north and to the west of us. And those counties' stormwater drainage systems come through the O'Geechi River. So all their rain came into our already, uh, challenged, you know, uh, stormwater drainage system. And so that led to the O'Geechi, of course, the other piece is the O'Geechi being very thin in our area. Uh, led to the O'Geechi overflowing. Uh, it was very unfortunate. Uh, we've seen a lot of homes be completely flooded. Uh, the area I represent is comprised of City of Savannah residents and then unincorporated Chatham County. Um, and so I had City of Savannah residents who were, uh, blocked in in two separate neighborhoods. Um, and that was a, a, a crazy undertaking because one of the neighborhoods is so big. Um, and the, the amount of personnel and resources available is so small. Uh, understanding that this was a hundred-year flood, we, we're seeing a lot of, um, folks have a lot to say about that, which I understand. And I, I think that there should be, uh, after we get through this, we kinda look back and look and see what we could do better. But nonetheless, when I look at the, uh, effects of the county as a whole, um, it was pretty tough. It's really tough. Again, a lot of folks have lost everything in the unincorporated portion of my district have lost everything. Uh, we were doing water evacuations as early as Thursday afternoon. Um, the county, we held a press conference Thursday at four. By the time we did that, we had already rescued twenty-five people. Um, and the water had risen. Uh, the water normally here at the King's Ferry Bridge, which is um, the line between Bryan County and Chatham County. Water normally is about three point five feet, three and a half feet. Um, at yesterday evening, it was at seven point seven. So we're seeing the receding, um, at its highest, it's at ten point four. Um, so again, you're talking about where normally the river level is at three point five, it risen up to ten point four. And it, it just created a lot of devastation, uh, for the low-lying areas. But again, the other thing is, uh, I'm, I'm glad to say there wasn't any loss of life. Um, and hopefully, we look at this, uh, cross-reference some of the pinch points in our stormwater drainage system. Uh, but also really work to build a resilient community. Some folks who live around the, uh, river may need to have some tough conversations because though this was a hundred-year flood, um, it's my personal opinion based on the data and how we're seeing climate change affect our nation and our world. Uh, we, it won't take another hundred years for us to see something like this again. So overall, again, I think we're doing well, but it's been a lot of work, I'll tell you that.
No, man.
There, there's a lot of challenge for people who say climate change is not real. And when you see things like this happen, it's definitely real. What have you guys done to start educating the community about, you know, what to expect, how to prepare? Hopefully not for the next go-round, but you just never know cuz we can't predict it.
Yeah, so we've definitely made a lot of strides in building our, uh, resiliency uh, as well as looking into investing in green energy in ways that we can. So I know here, as it relates to public relations, what you're asking when we're letting people know, um, we've, we haven't had much coming from the county with the exception of sharing folks what we're doing. And, um, we've put, uh, solar panels on our, uh, multiple buildings. We're working on some programming uh, as we speak, uh, to try to roll out some more engagement directly with the citizens. But, um, we don't really have much to tell folks, you know, uh, from a government perspective. Um, because we don't have much infrastructure built up for renewable energy. When I think about that, I think of, uh, for example, charging stations for vehicles, um, and our neighborhood resiliency centers in times like this. If power is out, there's somewhere where you can go and plug in, um, you know, essential items and whatnot. Uh, we are moving towards that. That is in our plans, uh, but we don't have that yet. So it's no use in telling folks. Um, well, we, we let them know we're working on it, but it's no use in trying to put a huge marketing campaign behind that when we don't have it. We're just gonna leave people with disappointment and then folks are gonna go say, government don't do nothing. So uh, I think we're trying to be more measured and how. I can't say though, uh, my chairman, Chester Ellis, as long as myself, um, are, are very strong proponents of finding renewable energy sources, trying to get us on that level of carbon neutrality by twenty thirty. Um, and so we, we're trying to do everything we can, uh, in our capacity as a county government.
Um, because you had so much severe damage through the storm, uh, was FEMA involved in coming in to support the people who may have lost their homes and belongings? Or is this something that the county has to, you know, handle by themselves?
Yeah, so at this point, we won't be able to, um, know what FEMA's gonna do until we have a few more steps to go. And, and so let me be clear, it was just Thursday when we announced our press co- at a press conference that the flood was happening. It was already happening. Um, just yesterday, our areas seeing water recede to the levels to where large vehicles can drive through it. So we're still in this thing. And so hear from FEMA until, you know, they get some folks on the ground, uh, along with us to do a true assessment of the damage. Um, and then, of course, it'll take a dec- a disaster declaration, uh, to really get FEMA fully involved. Now.
Does it need to come from you guys? Cuz I know the governor can't, that does the declaration need to come from you guys? Cuz I know Governor Kemp has already did a declaration, right?
He did a declaration of a state of emergency, which allowed us to have access to some state assets um, and resources, but a disaster area, I believe, comes after that. Uh, so there's not, we have not been declared a disaster area at this point. Um, but we are urging folks to take photos. Uh, document the damage that they've seen, um, so that we can show for, uh, the devastation that our community really faced.
Right, wow. And this is after the storm. So y'all really didn't get any damage, uh, wind damage from the actual storm, huh?
Yeah, we had, we had some damage, you know, not, not very, uh, significant damage, but, you know, it, it also just kinda shows how the community at, at large. And I say that, all of us, not just the people, the government as well, to some degree, we're caught with our pants down. Um, you know, we, we were prepared. We have, uh, emergency protocols in place, which we were able to deploy those as a county government. But, um, I would have hoped that we would have gotten people out before flooding happened. But we didn't know that that was gonna happen to that magnitude. Um, and so, yeah, you're right, there, it was sunny. And so with that mis- misconception, there are a lot of folks who were upset. I've got multiple emails of folks saying, you know, nobody told us and this and that. And I understand their frustration. One of the challenges that came about was that um, the water was rising in some of these residential areas within the City of Savannah's jurisdiction. And they ended up having to make the call as the water's rising, counties, cities are having to make the call to close down roads. Well, some folks had already taken their kids to school. Most of them, kids are already at school. Um, parents were at work. Uh, so some folks didn't make it back in time before everything got shut down. So I believe most of them just faced a challenge getting back in, uh, which was supported by the city. Um, but um, a lot of those folks had to make other arrangements because they couldn't get into their homes. So it definitely caught everybody slipping.
I was in Albany during the flood of ninety-four and that thing was so, it happened so fast. We couldn't even leave. Like, we were there for the Fourth of July. And it happened so quickly, we couldn't leave. We were there for like a week because the water rolled. I'm talking about ceilings of houses, like, that's how, how the water was.
That's what Flint River.
That was the Flint River. And, and it, but it happened so quickly. Like, you know, they would say, oh, you know, let's go down and try to save the civic center. So you know, we all go down civic centers, stack up sandbags, thinking that's it. By the time we got ready to leave, it was up to the light posts, the top of the lights at the civic center. It was crazy. I had never seen anything like it. I mean, it was, it was the, it was, it was devastating. But again, you know, it happened so quickly. So I don't even know what you can even do to help people be prepared for something like that because it happened so quickly.
Yeah, well, you know, one thing you, you said, Audrey, that, that kinda, the fact that you spoke about your memory of ninety-four, right? Um, it, it brings up something that I wanna make sure that we don't understate in our community. And that's, that left a lasting impression mentally. There are children who were, who are dur- enduring this. Um, now granted, don't get me wrong, um, in some of the areas, like, it's not, it's bad. It's not like Hurricane Katrina, right? Um, but again, still, when you're having to get up and move because you hear waters coming to take your house away, that could be, uh, traumatic. Uh, mental health is al- always understated. So, uh, I wanna just first start by saying, you know, we gotta make sure that we are prepared to support our citizens that are having challenges. Now, what I can say, what we're doing, um, we've already set up, uh, a lot of infrastructure to suppo- support folks. Um, one, we have a drop-off if folks wanna donate goods, uh, to support families who are coming back to flooded-out homes, so no more belongings. Uh, they can drop those off, um, at the Second Harvest Building on Chatham County. Uh, excuse me, on Chatham Parkway. Um, for those who are in immediate need of some sort of assistance because their hu- home was directly af- affected, they can go to the Adult Ministry Building of Compassion Church, uh, on fifty Al Henderson Boulevard. Um, and then we're already organizing extra dump stations or extra capacity at our dumps. Uh, working on getting some people with big trucks to help move stuff out. Um, so because again, a lot of damaged structures are gonna be there. A lot of drywall, a lot of, again, personal items that have to be trashed. So we're working on that piece. Now, what I just spoke of was the county's effort, right? The city has an effort as well, and we are working in collaboration. So um, I'm not completely privy to what their specific, uh, uh, plan is to actually help citizens. So, uh, to answer your question, what do you do to help prepare people? I don't, I don't know. I think one thing that we have to think about is just, um, really being proactive and sharing a central space for information. Because during this, what I saw happening uh, was misinformation was being passed through social media reporters. Um, and, and you know, that's not to negate anybody's perspective. Everybody has their own perspective. Uh, but we have to have somewhere where everybody knows that, okay, if I don't have power, I can use my weather radio. Well, first of all, I should have a weather radio or a battery-operated radio, uh, in the event that I lose power, internet. And then, you know, I can know where to go to get that pertinent information. Uh, we do have, you know, the text updates like everybody in Georgia does. You can text uh, through our Emergency Management Agency and stuff like that. But I think finding ways to streamline communication, especially the people in these affected areas, is gonna be, uh, one of the first things we need to do. Um, just so people understand that, okay, if we have some sort of a situation like this, you know that help is coming. You know, you can tell, give a situational report of what you're dealing with wherever you are, so that when help arrives, they're prepare, per- excuse me, prepared to help you efficiently.
Is there a website or anything that, that they can go to in the area to look up resources that the county provide?
I mean, you can go to the, the county's social media page as well as, uh, Chatham County, uh, GA.gov. Um, but the best option is to pull up. The other thing is you can give me a call, uh, especially if you're in my district, nine one two six five seven six eight five five. Um, and I'll be happy to point you in the right direction. Nine one two six five seven six eight five five. And so, yeah, this phone has been, been going nuts because I've been fielding calls from people who were, you know, out of touch, who, who needed assistance. And so we were able to get them squared away. Um, and I'm, I'm proud of that. But, um, everybody has to know what's going on weather-wise. We all have to take a level of accountability for. So moving forward, I hope everybody's paying attention to the news, paying attention to press conferences cuz I'll tell you, it was funny to get some emails, um, saying, nobody told us. I'm like, you did a whole press conference? If you turn on the news oh, map of Georgia says flood warning. I mean, you know, there's only so much we can do as, as, uh, government.
Then in addition to that, I, uh, cuz I follow Mayor Johnson, uh, his, his social media. Uh, he said that you guys have been in a record, uh, heat wave as well, in addition to the flooding.
Yeah, it's been super hot, man. Uh, I mean, crazy hot down here. And so you, you throw on that good old Savannah humidity with upper nineties and, you know, you dry cleaning blazers twice a week.
Dry cleaning blazer. Man, he got, he got all the lines, though. And dry cleaning blazer, yeah.
Well, we wanna thank you so much for coming on and, um, sharing that information with everybody and letting us know what's happening down there. If anything we can do, um, you know, to support you guys, let us know. And however we need to get the word out, if there's like, um, drop-off centers that we can drop off stuff or mail stuff to, please be sure to let us know that as well. And we'll be, you know, happy to pass that on and get it out to our communities here.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, the drop-off station will be the Second Harvest on Chatham Parkway. Um, and then if somebody is in absolute need, then they can go to the Adult Ministry Building at Compassion Church, um, and get assistance, wraparound services, as well as needs, clothing, uh, vouchers. You know, wanna definitely shout out our partners who've been working with us, um, you know, Red Cross, Goodwill, Salvation Army. Um, really been helping us a lot, uh, in connecting with, uh, our, these folks who are in need. I had some citizens of my, some of my constituents, excuse me, uh, whose whole block was flooded. Uh, six, these trailers, you know, multiple families uh, with nothing now, you know? One guy's a contractor, his trailer with his tools in it. You know, halfway submerged water, uh, submerged water. So definitely, um, continue to pray for us. You could also look on the Chatham County, Georgia Government, social media, as well as City of Savannah Government, social media. And there's, uh, detailed information on there as well.
Okay, awesome. And so outside of the weather, any other news going on in, uh, in, in Chatham?
I mean, yeah, there's always something going on in Chatham. I mean, I, I guess it's really what you wanna know. We, we always got something, you know, we, you, I know y'all got a lot of juice up there in Atlanta, but, uh, the coast with the most got something to say about that.
That's where he got him, boy. He got it all on the coast with the.
You know, you know.
For any events coming up? Y'all have any events, you know, once everything, uh, gets back to normal? Do I have any, uh, community events that you would like to spotlight?
Yeah, I mean, well, you know, Vice President, uh, Kamala Harris was actually scheduled to come here last Friday. And they had to postpone that. So we're waiting on a new date of her, to get her back down here. Uh, she was just here in February as well. Um, so we're looking forward to seeing them. Uh, I know the, uh, Democratic Party of Chatham County's got some events coming up. Uh, the Buttermilk Dinner's in September, September tenth, so that's something to know about. Uh, as we talk about, uh, well, let me, hold on, let me do this disclaimer for y'all. These opinions are those of Commissioner Aaron Whitley and not those of Good Morning Georgia.
Trade whale.
Wanna make sure that, uh, we salute you. You know, I'm a mass comm major from Savannah State, uh, but also was, uh, on the radio. So I understand what y'all gotta deal with. Um, when I think about some of the, um, events though that are coming up, you know, I can't think of anything off the top of my head. And I'll just say that just because I've been so preoccupied with trying to help these folks who've been dealing with the storm, man. I mean, I've been, I put a lot of miles on my car riding around from different sections. Again, my, my district was the hardest hit. So please forgive me for not being prepared in that regard. I was just trying to look out for folks and didn't take enough time to look at a list of events. But I know there's always something going on here in Savannah and in Chatham County. Uh, our, the Greater Savannah Black Chamber of Commerce, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, had a great black business expo. It was an amazing turnout, uh, with, uh, forums going on. Um, panels and round tables, if you will, as well as a lot of business connections being made. So really proud of that. Um, I know I'm proud to say that, you know, in twenty twenty-five, uh, we will be having, uh, the SEC down here for some sports. So that's been, uh, put out. So looking forward to that. Um, but yeah, we're, we're really growing. You know, our sports tourism is picking up a lot. Um, and again, our governments, I think, one of the best thing, the greatest things that I think is taking place down here, events-wise, is governments are collaborating and working together and getting out of silos, uh, to work for the county as a whole. And so that's an event um, for, for the ages. So I look forward to continuing to be a part of that.
Well, I happen, I love Savannah. So I was gonna come down there before the flood. I'm definitely afraid of water. So it's like, well, I'll just wait.
We gotta get these gators under control.
Gators.
Oh, yeah. You, in like Bradley Point subdivision, folks are just shooting video alligators in their back. Oh, yeah, you, in like Bradley Point subdivision, folks are just shooting video alligators in their backyard. Because the flood, I mean, again, the O'Geechi River came over roads. It was crazy to see catfish and little fish swimming on roads because the water was so high, so.
When I lived in Albany, the river would rise every year. Every winter, the river would rise. And when the river went down, you see all of these fishes laid out on, just laid out on the ground.
Man, you gotta get them before they die. They still fish like that.
No, 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 no.
That's a, that's a fish fry.
No, no, no.
Coming to you soon, Chatham County Fish Fry.
Yeah.
I like it, man. I'm sure we could raise some money.
Right, right. Well, one of your constituents was saying special thanks to you for all that you're doing. So you, they definitely love you and your, and your district, so keep it good luck. Are you on the ballot in November?
I am on the ballot in November, November. And so definitely uh, looking forward to be a part of that. We're campaigning now, definitely anybody in the sixth district, uh, you know, check out my website, AaronWhitley.com. That's A-A-Ron, the color white, L-Y dot com. Really want to continue doing the work we've been doing. I'm so proud of the work that we've done up to this point. And um, again, being a part of collaborative government and making sure that different folks are talking and having the conversations that need to be had, is something that I've taken great pride in. And um, you know, been able to get a lot of stuff done. So uh, I could sit here and stop for my campaign all day, but I don't want to take up all y'all's time.
Right, oh no, you're doing great. So look, uh, you, as you're aware, you may, well, you may, Art, you're now both president of chambers. And uh, we would love to come down there and, 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 and network and link up with the chambers in your area. I, I know you're real connected with the, the black chamber. But all the chambers in, in the Chatham area, we would love to uh, connect and reach out to them guys and see how we can do some collaborative and just network, you know, bring, you know, you know, connect the bridge from metro to, to the, to the coast.
Cause I heard you have some, some big developments coming down there. I heard this in a meeting um, with economic development a couple of days ago, some big developments coming through down there that are huge on, on the um, on the um, ports down there. So that's, that should be exciting.
Did y'all get a, a, a car plant?
Yeah.
Hyundai, Hyundai is down there?
The Hyundai Meta Plant is in Bryan County, which is the county neighboring us. But we were a part of that deal uh, as through the joint uh, development authority. Going back to that chamber discussion, yes, I am a board member for the Greater Savannah Black Chamber of Commerce. I'm also the incoming chairman for the Savannah Sports Council, which falls under the Savannah Chamber. Uh, so yeah, I'd love to be a part of connecting you all with whomever you want to talk to. I, I've already seen a lot of those connections um, from Atlanta start taking place recently. The Savannah Chamber, uh, recently we brought in um, Bert Brantley as our executive director or as our CEO. Uh, he's a former chief of staff to Governor Kemp. And I'll tell you, you know, Bert's been a good, good guy, good partner to work with. Uh, and I, he's somebody who gets it. And so uh, looking forward to seeing what's happening. And again, you know, on the heels of this uh, this great expo that we had, the black chamber is growing and doing a lot of big things too. So definitely want to connect y'all. Uh, going to the economic development, yeah, the Hyundai Meta Plant is uh, part of the largest economic development investment in the state of Georgia. Uh, Chatham County is part, uh, proud to be a cornerstone of that uh, partnership. And it's been interesting because not only is Hyundai building, well, they're actually supposed to be producing cars uh, this quarter.
The building is up.
Fourth quarter, excuse me, fourth quarter, uh, fourth quarter of this year. So um, you know, that, to see that go up so fast was amazing. Uh, for those of you that travel sixteen, you know, I remember we, we did the purchase and then clearing started happening within the week. And it got cleared out. When we first, uh, when I first went out there, it was completely wooded. Uh, the governor was out there as a big reception saying, hey, this is what we're doing, you know? Um, and then it was within months, they were building on that place. So that's a huge thing, bringing eighty-five, uh, hundred jobs. But the other jobs that are coming um, are those uh, tier two and tier three suppliers of Hyundai. Uh, so the folks who make the seeds or who make the whatever, they're bringing plants here as well. Um, and we've been, our, our, our government is, Chatham County especially in the city of Savannah, uh, applaud my predecessors, my uh, pre- previous elected officials for having the foresight to make an investment on creating the Savannah-Chatham Manufacturing Center, which was basically um, multiple industrial pads that are ready to build on uh, to help uh, bring in uh, economic development opportunities. And so that's happening really fast and, but I also would be remiss if I didn't uh, also share that the other side of that coin is now we're in a housing shortage. And so it got really fast uh, because all these people are coming, um, and they gotta work. I mean, they, they gotta have somewhere to live. And you know, of course, we've seen um, the cost of properties uh, raised and increased. Uh, our tax digest has increased, um, leading to higher taxes that people are paying. Uh, just to be clear, that's not us raising taxes, it's the value of the property that is taxed has increased. That's been taking place. So you know, that's one of those challenges that we're working through. But I'm glad to see that we have uh, multiple coalitions working on that to include uh, both of our chambers, uh, to include our economic development authorities, the Savannah Economic Development Authority and the governmental entities. I know Chatham County, we've partnered with um, Habitat for Humanity to build a, to start building affordable housing in um, Port Wentworth. And so that's the, the northern portion of our uh, county. And that partnership is going well. We're supplying the land, they're doing the building. Uh, so everybody's kind of chipping in to make some things happen, but we're also lobbying our federal and state legislators kind of give us some uh, tools to free up the ability to make housing more affordable. Uh, you know, my personal belief is we can't build our way into affordable housing. You know, sticks and bricks doesn't fix affordable housing, uh, because all that stuff costs. You know, I mean, it costs, right? But we, I think that government needs some more tools to make housing affordable. And the way we could do that is through abatement programs. So I know one of the things I've been asking uh, every time I get to talk to somebody from Senator Ossoff's office or Senator uh, Warnock's office or any of our legislators, give us some leeway in the community development block, block grants to provide tax abatements. You know, maybe that's um, that's some way we can use. I've said it to folks up at HUD too. So uh, if y'all will join me and echo in that sentiment, perhaps we can get some money down here to, again, ease some of that pressure of the rents, because I'm, I'm, I know y'all are dealing with it to some degree. Well, Atlanta.
Yes, we are.
Oh, yeah. Oh, man.
They're off the chain, they're off the chain up here. I don't know how, how, how far up the chain they are down there, but up here, it's off the chain.
Well, y'all all rich up there, you know, we just little peasants on the coast with our little shrimp boats.
Not so, not so.
But look, thank you. So real quick, uh, you know, our weather uh, is, 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 is brought to us by uh, a contracting company that, 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 you know, invested into this, in, into our show, Southern Elite Contracting. And uh, you know, so all since the storm, we send anyone, if they have any damage, text STORM to eight 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 three five one three eight six. And uh, someone from Southern Elite will reach out to you guys to assist in any manner that you reach out at, you know, if there's assist with some repairs, uh, assisting with uh, with the insurance claim. The whole nine yard, they're there to assist. And so just wanted to make sure we get that out as we hear about the damage. Uh, just wanted to make sure that we, you know, we do our part to make sure that, you know, our sponsors are.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you, thank you for sharing that. Because again, uh, what can't be understated is the recovery effort that it's going to take uh, to get folks back to, you know, square one again. But we've got a long road uh, to get there for some people. So you know, we're gonna um, you know, I'm sure that somebody will definitely use that number.
Yeah, well, I, look, it was great speaking with you. I, 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 you know, I reached out to you last week to see how you and the family was doing, because I knew the storm. Now, the one thing, so my biggest, not, you know, my background is, is an insurance adjuster. So I've, I've been to disaster areas. Uh, and I'm originally from Houston. So as you know, we dealt with, well, they dealt with barrel. And my biggest gripe with them, and I'm not going to say it's a gripe with you guys, but I just want to put it out there. These were cat ones and tropical storms. You know, we all know that it can get worse.
Yeah.
You know, are there anything in place that, you know, because if this was a cat two, three, you know, as you know, Florence a couple of years ago was a five. Uh, and then you have um, uh, Iniesta that's out there, they say is following the, the, uh, the, the course of Maria. As we know, Maria did sway off and miss Florida, so missed the coast. But you know, Maria was a cat five, you know, like, are there anything in place for when it becomes? Cause hurricane season is just wrapping up. Most of the largest hurricanes happened around August thirty-first and September fifth. So are, are there any additional things in place for when it's a big one? Cause these were little, this was like, like you said, a wake up call. But now that you guys are away, are there anything in place?
Well, well, so a couple of things. First of all, this is the beginning of hurricane season. Uh, so to get this so early is scary. And, and I want to be clear that we did have stuff in place. The issue is there are certain things that we just were beyond, it was beyond our control. Excuse me, uh, an example I give, there were multiple dams that broke up the state that are upstream from the O'Geechi River. Now granted, had those not broken, we still would have experienced flooding. So let me be clear, I'm not trying to place blame here. But um, to this magnitude, we weren't necessarily as prepared as we needed to be. The bottom line though is there's only so much we can do when it comes to a river. This wasn't a drainage issue. This was a river overflow, over, you know, over, it over.
Yeah.
It just flooded, you know, we couldn't control that. And so um, like I said uh, earlier in this uh, cast, we have some serious conversations to have with some residents, certain parts of our, our county. Um, as does Bryan County. Bryan County saw uh, it's, it looks bad over there too. Again, that's the county that neighbors us, we're se- separated by the O'Geechi River. And they had it bad over there. So you know, we've got a lot of things to kind of look into and to work on to uh, to get things together. But it, this wasn't a drainage issue as much as it was just a, a terrible combination of events. I mean, you had, again, a storm, normally a category one, two or three, they're moving faster, right? This storm was moving at like between five and ten miles an hour. So and this is dropping rain and saturating our land and, and, you know, pushing our drainage systems to the brink. And then so, oof, it moves and it goes on. So now it's finally catching its breath, but as the drainage systems are catching its breath, here comes the water from that same storm that sat to the northwest of us um, right there and sends their stormwater down into the O'Geechi to the ocean. So you know, again, we're going to have to have some serious conversation as to what's next. Because there, in reality, we can't stop the river. What are we going to do? Build up, I guess we could build a dam if we want to. Uh, but that's not cheap. We trying to build affordable housing. Uh, we might have to look at relocating or, or changing uh, the zonings on some areas and, and perhaps the government stepping in and, and specific ones and condemning them for the sake of the, those citizens buying them from them, of course. Uh, but again, we're not there yet, so I don't want anybody to be afraid of that. But these are conversations that we are going to have to have because like you said, and like I said, this was a hundred year flood, but we're, it's going to be less than a hundred years before we see something like this again. So we do have to get prepared and we are working diligently to find more grants. Uh, working with the feds even currently uh, to get money to help build our resiliency, our coastal resiliency. So this has been an effort that Chatham County has been knee deep in. Again, this was just the worst combination of factors uh, to create the worst case scenario. So I'm, I'm, I'm sure that we'll get it together, but we definitely have to kick it in high gear.
Awesome.
Well, thank you so much for taking some time to be with us today. Feel free to come on whenever you'd like to tell us what's happening down there on the coast, because we would love to hear it. And I'll be down there once you guys get it all straightened out again.
Well, hey, the coast with the most is always uh, a friend to Good Morning Georgia. So anytime that I could be of any assistance, anytime I could answer any questions, don't hesitate to call me. This time is good for me, I'm in my office about to get some work done, start working on my to do list. So anytime I could give some insight on behalf of Chatham County Government, on behalf of the Democratic Party of Chatham County, as I'm the chair of that, um, or any of our other entities that I'm associated with, I'd be more than happy to uh, you know, do that.
I heard he was part of the Harris campaign.
Well, I'm about to, you took the words right up my mouth. I was about to drop that seed, like we need some press passes for that when she gets there. And she up close and, you know, up on the front, so we can live stream that whole thing.
I'll see what I can do, but I, I'm just a mere, a mere surrogate, you know? So I, I don't necessarily have the big guns. I'm just uh, I'm just the guy going on the Good Morning Georgia saying that uh, Vice President Harris, walls are the best choice for our country, uh, and moving us forward. And I think they make a great combination and I look forward to helping get them elected. I'm making history in November.
All right, but thank you so much. Thank you again and enjoy the rest of your day.
All right, y'all have a good one.
Bye bye.
That was great.
Well, that was a great information. So listen, you can't, you can't go to Savannah right now, but he would not suggest that you do so. I know it's beautiful down there, I love Savannah. Um, so find somewhere else in Georgia to go, go to exploregeorgia.com, you can find somewhere to go.
And the interesting part though, we didn't, like, you know how we were looking at the news and we read about it?
Yeah, we didn't see a lot.
We didn't realize it was that bad. Yeah, like, yeah, so uh, yeah, I mean, as he was talking, I was like, wow, that, that, you know, they just made it seem like it was flooding. But I didn't realize it's been flooding since last Thursday.
Yeah, that's a lot. That's a lot. And I, and I've been in a flood and it's just like parts of Albany is still undeveloped after the flood. And that was in ninety-four. Like they did build up like um, right downtown on Whitney, which is where my grandmother used to live, where the river just, that's where the river is, like right there on the other side of Civic Center. They built some like townhomes there. But when you go past that block, those houses are still like, they look like the day when the flood happened. Like on and down Jackson Street and like Jackson Street, on the south side of Jackson Street, uh, when you go down Whitney, on the other side of Whitney, they did some building out by the River Row area. They built some houses, right? But there's still like a lot of empty spaces where houses used to be where my, where my elementary school was, that's all gone. There's no school there, it's just, it's a space. So that, and that's a long time coming. So you know, hopefully they can, you know, go back and rebuild better than they were before. I feel like the six million dollar man right now, rebuild better than they were before and give people like a better option. So um, and, and you know, put, put whatever they can in place so this doesn't happen. I think a lot of people just feel like it can't happen to us, right? It'll never happen to us. And when I'm over here talking doomsday prepping, you heard what the man said, get you a weather radio with a battery.
Yeah, I ain't never heard of it. He said, I like, hmm, I need to write that down.
I didn't even write, I made a mental note, weather radio. I made a note, because you know, I'm, I'm prepping, I'm getting all my stuff together.
That's the way you wind up.
I don't know. I was like, I'm going, definitely going straight to Amazon, look boy, weather radio. I'm like, what the radio? I heard about satellite telephones, I heard about satellite, the solar panels, the solar generators. Like I'm definitely doomsday prepping, y'all.
A weather radio.
Weather radio.
I wonder if he learned about that in the military. He was in the military as well. He's a, he's a.
Probably so, probably so. I mean, good information though, good information, good information for the people, good information for other local communities and governments to take heed to. It could happen to anybody. That was a hundred years, right? Hundred years. It could happen anytime because we are living in some strange times with some strange weather because of the climate change. And I know some people don't think it's real, it's made up. Just look around, would you please just take a look?
Right.
All right, all right, we're going to go to our last commercials and then we're going to come back and close it out for the day. So stay tuned, we'll be right back.
Why do seventy percent of aspiring authors never publish their work? Because they don't have Bookpreneur. Whether you're dreaming of publishing your memoir, a children's book, or the next great novel, Bookpreneur is your go-to source. Our weekly newsletter and video show offer step-by-step guidance and insider tips to help you navigate the publishing world. Don't let your masterpiece stay hidden. Join the Bookpreneur community today and start turning pages into profit. Subscribe now at www/bookpreneur.com.
In a world where business and sustainability intersect, the Gwinnett Women's Chamber of Commerce, or GWC, stands as a beacon of empowerment and innovation. Our mission, to empower women in business while fostering a culture of sustainability within our community. We're not just about business growth, we're about eco-friendly practices, about encouraging a healthier, more sustainable future for all. Through innovative tools, equipment and education, we're supporting the success of women entrepreneurs and promoting a greener tomorrow. Our vision stretches beyond the present. We see a future where GWC is a leading force in the promotion of women's entrepreneurship and environmental stewardship. A vibrant community where women in business thrive alongside a commitment to sustainability. We're making the Gwinnett region a model for inclusive economic growth and ecological balance. We are the Gwinnett Women's Chamber of Commerce, where business meets sustainability. Join us in shaping the future.
MD Communications Group, a complete networking hub. Trans technologies to your way. Struggling with your nutmeg provider, let's. Struggling with your network provider? Let's resolve this together with M D Communications Networking Hub. Slow internet, bad television, bad cell phone services, and want to save more, choose us. They offer economical deals, discounted prices, fast rates, faster internet, maximum channel options and clear signals. Stay stress-free. Try our fast residential and commercial high-speed internet, television and mobile phone services. Let us manage your stress. Contact us through our website, communicationsmd.com or call us seven seven zero four two one five five nine eight.
All right. Well, as we wrap it up, um, I, I, I cannot, you know, the Olympics, I love the Summer Olympics. Uh, those who watched it, did y'all catch the breakdancing? Breakdancing this year was the, the first time they did breakdancing at the Summer Olympics. Uh, it was definitely worth watching. Uh, well, they announced that it will not be included in, uh, in the, in the Summer Games of twenty twenty-eight. Uh, I think Australia messed it up for everybody. Uh, all I can tell you is watch the video. If you've seen it, I'd love you to comment on it, but the, it, it, it was no people of color in the breakdance, uh, section. And so that's interesting. Uh, I don't know if it started, but I believe in the U S, it started in, in Brooklyn, New York.
Probably.
No, not Brooklyn, the Bronx, the Boogie Down Bronx.
Boogie Down.
It, it, it started in the Bronx. So, um, for them to have, I mean, it didn't expand worldwide, but it, it, it was worth watching. I mean, it, you know.
I didn't even know that. I didn't even, so, so that was a part of the Olympics? That, was that Thriller?
I don't know what she was doing. That was she was doing it.
And also in breakdancing? Cause that looked like Thriller.
They were doing the breakdancing. They call it breaking, uh, the, it was the Olympic breaking session as they called it, but yeah, it was, uh, it was horrible.
If you missed any parts of the Olympic, you can go back and watch it on demand on somewhere. Cause I, you know, we started, I missed a game with Steph Curry. And, um, that's what we'll be watching this weekend. I was like, I hate watching stuff that's in the past though, like for real. I'm like, I, so I said, I don't really want to watch it, because it's, it's over. He's like, yeah, but we didn't see, we didn't.
You know, I heard all about the highlights.
Heard about the highlights, but we're probably watching this weekend. So if you didn't see the Olympics, you can, you can find it somewhere. Um, yeah, that was terrible. Yeah, go look for the video. We don't know what she was doing. She looked like she was going Thriller though. That looks like Thriller to me, honestly.
Breakdancing.
She was breaking.
She was breaking.
Right, right.
Bless her, what'd they say? Bless her little heart.
Bless her heart, bless her heart. Listen, we hope you guys enjoyed this episode of Good Morning Georgia. Please be sure to subscribe to the show on Facebook, LinkedIn, YouTube and Instagram. Also, um, be sure to connect with us on those platforms as well and share the show with your friends. If you are somewhere in Georgia and you want to come out and you, you want to come on the show and share what's going on in your neck of the woods email. Let's go to the Good Morning Georgia website. That's goodmorninggeorgia.org, goodmorninggeorgia.org, goodmorninggeorgia.org. Also, if you want to be a, an affiliate partner, so you can, you can stay in to know about what's going on. This show will be also on Amazon Fire TV pretty soon, as well as Roku. So, and, and if you are beyond the state of Georgia and you have a business and you want to come on and talk about how to do business with the state of Georgia, the business owners in Georgia, both Derek and I, both, uh, chamber presidents, we have opportunities, um, here with our members. Also, we're looking for opportunities to collaborate with other, other chambers and other business organizations outside of the state of Georgia. Even if you're in another country, we are working on something right now with Liberia. Um, and you should be seeing someone come on from Liberia pretty soon to talk about opportunities that are available in Liberia and how to do business with the country of Liberia over in Africa. So stay tuned for that. We'll be back again tomorrow at ten A M. God willing, you guys.
Nine A M.
Oh Lord, nine A M, nine A M, nine A M, God willing. You guys stay safe out there. And until next time, make it a great day. Bye, everybody.